Call and order, Pecosin City School Board Meeting for September 21st, 2010. Billy, would you introduce our Order of the Plage and inspirational reading tonight, please?
Okay. Mary Marsh is a junior at Pecosin High School and she is a second year member of the Jazz Choir and is an active member of Victory Christian Center. She has been on the A.B. Honor Roll the past two years and is looking forward to achieving that same goal again this year. She is planning on attending Evangel University in Springfield, Missouri after graduating from Pecosin High School and majoring in music industry. And the inspirational reading will be done by Ashley Langbean and she is a senior involved in Jazz Choir and Theatrics. She is also a member of the Pecosin High School Key Club and the Chess Club. She plans to attend Longwood Community College in Oahu, Hawaii, and then transferring to a major university to study forensics. Her reading tonight is from Robert Frost, "The Road Not Taken."
So, Mary, if you could start us off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two roads diverge in a yellow wood, and sorry, I could not travel both, and be one traveler, long I stood, and looked down one as far as I could, to where it bent in the undergrowth. Then took the other as just as fair, in having perhaps the better claim, because it was grassy and wanted wear, though as for that, the passing there, have worn them really about the same. And both that morning equally lay, and leaves no step had trodden black; oh, I marked the first for another day, yet knowing how way leads on to way, I doubted if I should ever come back. I shall be telling this with a sigh somewhere between ages and ages hence, to roads diverge in a wood, and I, I took the one less traveled by, and that has made all the difference."
Our next item will be our student presentation. It's always wonderful to start these meetings off with our students, as an excellent reminder of why we're here. Tonight, we're going to have a Star Spangled Banners going to be performed by the Pecosin High School Vocal Jazz Ensemble, Enda Pocket. Enda Pocket is currently in its third year at Pecosin High School and consists of upperclassmen who show their love of music and their passion for the art of jazz by performing at various community events throughout the year. Last year, they were featured at the annual holiday parade, as well as several events sponsored by the Pecosin Business Alliance. Enda Pocket is also becoming known for its ratings in local choral competitions and festivals. Please welcome Enda Pocket. to stay for just a couple of minutes, we're going to have one more item on the agenda and then we're going to take a short recess so that we can come down and talk to you and thank you for your performance. All right, we'll move on to our next item, Item Three, additions and/or modifications to the agenda. Do we have any this evening?
We do not.
All right, then we'll move into recognitions.
And I actually have the pleasure of recognizing our chair, Mr. Scott Diggs, if you could please come forward this evening. Each year, the Virginia School Boards Association recognizes the school board members that receive training throughout the course of the year. As a result, Scott is being recognized with the Virginia School Boards Association Award of Excellence. This award is presented to him for his commitment to effective school board governance through his participation in the Virginia School Boards Association School Board Academy. I'd like to congratulate you, Scott, with this and also thank other school board or all of our school board members because they do go through training experiences throughout the year, whether it is here with us or also at other V.S.B.A. activities. So I thank everyone for their continued commitment and dedication to the board and congratulations to you, Scott.
Laurel Fratzke is the chairperson for the Special Education Advisory Committee and will be sharing with us this evening. Thank you for coming.
I would like to thank the school board for their continued support. Even though this was a difficult budget year, the board and school division are continuing to provide the necessary staffing and support programs for students with disabilities. I would also like to thank Mrs. Wilson for her involvement with the SEAC last year. It has been a pleasure. We look forward to working with Mr. Carter this coming year and welcome any suggestions he may have. This past year, we have continued our efforts to promote involvement and attendance at SEAC meetings and have seen up to a 67 percent increase in participation. I am pleased to say that this reflects an increase in both parent and staff attendance. Considering that our highest attendance was 10, however, we're still world-blow where we'd like to be. We welcome our new members, including Mrs. Pam Upchurch, who will serve as staff representative for Pecosin City Schools. The SEAC has met four times this past school year. For our first meeting in October, Mrs. Doris Feltman presented a special education update, including parent survey results, immediate targets for improvement, and detailed changes to Virginia regulations as they pertain to special education. For our December meeting, Mrs. Kim Mezzick gave a presentation about Pecosin's Parent Teacher Resource Center. We were pleased to have our school psychologist and school psychology practicum student, Mrs. Amy Porter, and Ms. Kelly Stiles discuss psychoeducational assessments in February. For our April meeting, Mrs. Doris Feltman presented the annual plan, followed by Mrs. Charlene Wentland's presentation, Teaching Social Skills Through Acting. In our efforts to increase awareness, all SEAC meetings were included in the monthly school bulletins, the Resource News Mailer, the school division's website, and the Yorktown Crier Pecosin Post Newspaper. Thanks to the efforts of the Office of Student Services, SEAC meeting information was also communicated directly to staff and sent home to all students with IEPs. Our first meeting for the school year is October 14th. October has been designated through Senate Joint Resolution 321 as Disability History and Awareness Month in Virginia. The goal of this initiative is to promote positive attitudes in schools through education and awareness of disabilities to create a culture of mutual respect, understanding, and equal opportunities for all. I hope you'll join us on October 14th and share with us any ideas or suggestions you may have for upcoming topics. It is our hope that through the support of parents and teachers, we will make Pecosin City Public Schools an even better place for students with special needs to learn and grow. The Pecosin SEAC will also meet on the following dates, December 9th, February 17th, and April 21st. All meetings will be held at Pecosin Elementary School Room C-200 from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. I look forward to serving as chair for the SEAC this year. Thank you again for your support and for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you. All right, our next item is a financial update. Mr. Bowman, please present.
Well, I'd just like to start off saying that that was one of the best performances I've ever heard of the Star Spangled Banner. That was fantastic. I think they should perform that at one of the football games. Good evening, Chairman Diggs, school board members, and Dr. Parrish. In the finance update this evening, what I'd like to do is I'd like to share with you the most current information we have on state revenue. Just last week, the state reported that general fund revenues for the month of August grew 5.3 percent over the same period last year. However, year-to-date revenues for the general fund are down 5.7 percent. As we look at lottery fund revenues, the August actual is down 10.8 percent and year-to-date revenue is down 5.4 percent. This is compared to, again, the same period last year. Now, I don't want to paint this as this is the true picture for FY 11, but what I think it, this is only a two-month report, but what I think it does tell us is that we're still in the environment of economic uncertainty in terms of FY 11 and in terms as we move forward to FY 12. Now, as we move forward for the coming months, the state will begin to share more information with us. Although there's been no specific date given for state revenue reforecast for the entire year, next month, we will have the full first quarter revenue available to us and we will share that information again with you at the October meeting. In November, we'll have the first four months of the fiscal year to share with you. In December 17th, the governor is scheduled to release his proposed budget. Barring some other additional information in mid-fall, this will probably be the first indicator of how fiscal year 11 is, how we tend to fare in fiscal year 11. It will also be given the information for fiscal year 12. Now, for the General Assembly, this is the short session. The short session is 30 days, but the General Assembly has the option and they usually exercise it to extend an additional 30 days. In late January, February, the House will release their versions of the proposed budget. In late February, the House and Senate will reconcile their versions and forward their copy to the governor for signature. And we can expect the final state budget most likely in April. And that's the presentation for this evening.
Any questions, Moore?
I do have a question, not on this presentation, but on some of the information that you provided. Real quick, the revenue summary report, in-school payroll receipts, what is that? And we didn't budget that we were going to get any, but apparently some has shown yet. And I was just curious what that was.
Our in-school payroll receipts?
Yes, sir.
What that is, is that it's related to cafeteria workers, I'm sorry, for bus drivers. We have to charge the bus drivers for field trips and other activity that's taking place that's not normally budgeted. And then what happens is, we pay for it, but then we bill the schools for that activity. So that money has to come back to us and then we have to have it re-appropriated in our budget because it's not something, we don't know what that figure's going to be from year to year. So we bring those figures to you. It's generally done quarterly and then it has to be, by law, approved by the school board.
Okay. Another question. With all this economic turmoil, is there any issue with receiving money from state or local agencies, grants? Any holdup there that would impact our operations?
We haven't seen any holdup from the state or the feds as far as grants. I will say that the monies available to us from the feds are done on a reimbursement basis, so we usually incur the expenditure and then have to file the proper paperwork to get reimbursed for those grants. So they're not generally advance funded.
So, nothing out of the ordinary for this year? We're tracking about where we normally would track?
Yes, at this point in time, yes.
Okay, great. That's all I have.
Any other questions, Moore? Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Our next item is our operational update. Mr. Pappas?
Good evening, Chairman Diggs, school board, Dr. Parrish. Every year, school starts. It's absolutely the compression of time for us in operations. Summer quickly runs out, work orders quickly run up. In the area of custodial services, the summer cleaning activities that we had proposed to do, we were able to complete in time for the opening of school. We also implemented an enhanced cleanup program for the football field and concomitant bathrooms this year, and the results are being very well received. In the area of maintenance, two new boilers that were approved and funded by the city on the CIP have been delivered. Old boilers removed, new boilers are sitting in place, and we anticipate that they will be operational within the next three weeks. The chiller portion of this CIP project will be ready for the cooling season. At the high school, the main shaft of the chiller was replaced this summer. Almost no one recognized the fact that the AC was down for a few days. We worked over the weekend. Several computer classrooms have received entire electrical rewiring. Those are the highlights for the maintenance area. In the transportation area, as you know, budget constraints resulted in a reduction of two full-time drivers. As a result of this, we needed to reconfigure all of our bus routes to absorb 135 a.m. and 135 p.m. bus stops. The resulting changes were implemented, and drivers, parents, and students have all done a remarkable job, adjusting to fewer stops, fuller buses, changes in walk distance, and new bus stop times. In the area of food service, we are going to participate in the Team Nutrition Program sponsored by the USDA. The primary school's already signed up to do that with us. And this year, we've substituted, among many other enhancements in our menu, whole wheat bread instead of white bread. In the area of safety, the schools are performing their required fire drills, one each week of the first three weeks of, or the last three weeks of September, which are the first three weeks of school. Bus evacuation drills are taking place within the first day, the first one being tomorrow at PES. And each school has scheduled all of their other critical safety drills with me, such as lockdown and the other various drills that we do all year. That's the operations report.
Thank you. Moore?
I have a question, an air-marked question. How do we get our kids to eat these whole wheat rolls? I heard all about the hamburger.
Yeah, I had one, and I'm on a no-carb diet. It tasted great to me, but I haven't had a carb for months.
Okay. That's why I should do it all. Just take away the carbs.
You know, we all know that it's a wonder any of us got any vitamins from Wonder-type breads with the quote-unquote enriched whole wheat white flour.
Sugar.
Yeah, pure sugar. This is whole wheat bread. We're really dedicated to trying to give it a go.
I respect that. I'm just working on changing that in my home.
Yeah, changing habits, changing habits.
In-school.
Mr. Pappas, you said this was a nutrition program. Could you elaborate on that a little bit? Tell us a little more about what you said that one of the schools had signed up?
Yeah, each year, there are different initiatives that take place. Last year, we participated in, and the year before, we participated in the governor's nutrition and exercise program. And we'll have more on that in the ensuing months. But this year, the Department of Education, USDA, excuse me, came out with a team nutrition program, and it's designed to help employees of cafeterias, faculty, and students learn more about nutrition. It's the building blocks. It's trying to inculcate some good nutritional guidelines in the youth of America as part of the ongoing teaching process across everything we do, not just the classroom.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank Steve and Dr. Parrish for the excellent tour they gave Gary and I as new board members. You do some very amazing things on a very thin wallet, sir.
I have good people and we have good direction and we get a lot of good things done, so thanks for recognizing that.
Mr. Pappas, the boilers and all, thank you for the update on that. Do you have any feel for what, is this going to be an energy savings?
Absolutely. These are high-efficiency boilers, two of them, 1.5 million BTUs each. And I'm very excited because I've already prepared the superintendent for the fact that the natural gas folks will come out twice in disbelief of our gas consumption. And then they'll change the meter with one that I'm not sure how it'll read, but...
That has happened, or you expect that to happen?
I expect that to happen.
Yes. That's good news. Another question for you. So now that we are well on our way with this and you've gotten school open and you've done the things that you normally do during the summer, any other big initiatives, not necessarily CIP things, but things that you'd like to address during the year?
Not at this time. There's plenty. Every day is a big challenge. And I don't mean to make light of that because, seriously, every teacher's request for a broken pencil sharpener is almost as important as a no-heat call. So, you know, some things take less time than others, but every one of them's important.
Well, I want you to know that I certainly appreciate your staff's willingness to work and get in there and get those things done, can-do attitude. They're great folks. And Mr. Bowman's too. You know, I understand, it's almost like a fire call. You go from zero to 100 miles an hour on day one.
Absolutely.
So it's a lot of work and I appreciate what you guys are doing. So thank you very much.
Our pleasure.
Are we getting any income on this nutritional program from the fed or from the state?
For this particular program that we're referring to, no. This is just an educational enhancement. They're providing funds. We're not expending funds.
Okay.
So they're giving us posters and we're getting some training through them. And it's designed to help us, help students and faculty understand the importance of nutrition and whole wheat bread.
Thank you.
Do you know how old the boilers were that we replaced?
Yeah, I think they were 36 or 7 years old. We had received notification from our boiler inspection company that they had to be replaced. And thankfully, the city funded those. I'm very grateful and I'm excited that these boilers are in place.
Moore, any more questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Pappas.
Yes, sir. All right, our last item for presentation reports will be an instructional update. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, I'm actually going to give the update today because Dr. Reeve is unable to be here this evening. And I just want to highlight two pieces of instructional data that have been in the media over the course of the last two weeks. Some more scores were released by the state and also, in the case of SAT scores, by the college board. So I just want to highlight our accreditation status. Now, remember, this is a state accreditation process, so this is different from the AYP or No Child Left Behind accreditation that we go through. But you can see from the slide here that our students have done very well on our state tests. Again, it's our state SOL test. And just a reminder that when we create these accreditation scores, we're combining all of the tests that the students take. So for example, when we're looking at the elementary school scores, which are what accredit our primary school, because our primary school does not give any SOL test because it's K-2, we fold all of the English scores, the reading scores from 3, 4, and 5 together, and then this year had a 90 percent pass rate there. And that would be true for the middle school and the high school. At the high school level, remember, we're only giving English reading and writing in the 11th grade year. But you can see in English that we did have some wonderful scores, 90, 97, 98 percent pass rates. And at the middle school, that actually represented an increase in the scores. And at the high school, that was an increase. And at the elementary school, it was just a difference, a decrease by, I believe, one percentage point. So while we continue to work hard in this area, I think that certainly shows that we are having quite a bit of success. And then you look at the next column, we'll look at math. Again, you're combining tests together to create these scores. At the elementary school, we had a 90 percent pass rate. At the middle school, 85. And at the high school, we had a 96 percent pass rate. At the middle schools area, I want to highlight, we did see a decrease there in our math overall pass rate, although we do, again, have an 85 percent pass rate, which is certainly not bad, but we're going to continue to work hard in that area so we can see that increase again in future years. And then you see here our history for all of our schools. Note that you see Grade 3 broken out for history and science. Note that you see Grade 3 broken out for history and science because they actually have slightly different accreditation requirements at the 50% level. So we've broken them out, but you can see that our students have done very well in this area with the 95 and 92. And at the middle school, I want to highlight the 86%. That actually was a big increase for us this past year. In the 6th grade social studies test alone, we went up 22% pass rate, and as a combined increase, it was an 8% pass rate in the accreditation rate. So we were quite pleased with that. We want to continue to see that increase, too. But I did want to highlight that our middle school staff really worked hard. They had taken new tests last year because we had the breakout tests and certainly had did a lot of hard work. And at the high school, you see the 98% in history, again, quite a good score. And again, in science, you see now the middle school and the high school, 98% pass rates in both, and then at Grade 3, 96, and then 91%. So overall, we're very pleased with our accreditation ratings, and we've seen some nice increases in some areas, and we'll focus on those areas that we want to see some more increases in. So I just wanted to share that with the community and with you all because there had been a story about accreditation status, I think, last week in the Daily Press. And now let's look at SAT data because this was also recently released by college board. This shows you a three-year trend for us, and these are college-bound seniors from Pecosin High School. So we sometimes will have sophomores taking the SAT tests. They could choose to do that, but they're not included actually in the scoring system. I want to highlight the critical reading area because we really did see a big increase there, 19 points, so we were quite pleased to see that increase. And at the math, we saw a slight decrease by 3, and at the writing by 1. So again, we're going to continue to focus on those areas, but I did think certainly highlighting a 19-point increase, that's a pretty significant increase that we did see there. We are above, as you can see, side by side. If you look at the green, that's this year. We're above state and national averages in all areas for our SAT scores, which is, again, something to be very proud of. Our teachers have been working hard with our students, and I know our students work hard on the test. And then finally, we did break out for you the number of students taking SAT. So we had actually the same number of students take it this year as last year, but that's an increase in percentage because our class was a smaller class, so we saw a slight increase in the percentage of students last year taking the SAT test. So our hats off to our teachers who work so hard and all of our other staff with our students to achieve these results, and we'll continue to update you through the year as we get other test data, but we wanted to share that with you this evening as an instructional report.
Thank you. Board, do we have any questions?
Dr. Parrish, I noticed that the state pass rate for the history and science is 50%. Did they give any expla, one slide back if... There you go. Down at the bottom, Grade 3, History and Science, 50%. Did they give any explanation for why that's such a low?
They did that years ago. It's held forever. They haven't up that, so I don't, you know, originally, they may have done it just because it was so new to our third graders to be taking, you know, tests in those areas, and it's just not changed. So I can't really give you, I'd have to go back a number of years to give that answer to you, which we certainly can.
But that 50% has been standard for a while?
Yes, yes, that's not different.
Probably because they're third graders, it's their first estimate.
Remember, too, over the years, we've increased the number of tests because we, once NCLB came into place, 4th graders used to not take English or math tests, and they now take those, and those are folded in. So we've seen more tests being given. The AYP continues to raise, but the state level has stayed the same.
Any other questions?
One question on the number of seniors taking SATs. Do you have any feel for how many of our juniors take the SATs and then don't take them as a senior?
I don't, but I can certainly try and get a sense for you. And we have some that double. They'll take it a junior and a senior year, but we're, they're not double-counted when we're talking about the test, but we can get that information for you.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Parrish. That will move us to Item 6, our consent agenda. Mr. Smith, could you take us through that?
The consent agenda for tonight, we have approval of financial reports enclosed, personnel action enclosed, authorization to accept and expend additional grant dollars in an amount of $8,124 enclosed. I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Would you please call the board?
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Bellamy?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Chairman Diggs?
Aye.
Motion approved by a vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you. Next item is other matters for consideration. The first item is consideration of approval of the August board minutes, the regular and work session. Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
I move that we approve the August board minutes, regular, and work sessions.
Do we have a second? Do we have any discussion? No? All right, then if you would please call the board.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Bellamy?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Chairman Diggs?
I abstain due to an absence.
Motion approved by a vote of 6 to 1 abstain.
Thank you. Our next item is consideration of approval of proclamation for Virginia Disability History and Awareness Month for the month of October. Do I have a motion to accept this proclamation?
I move that we accept the proclamation for Virginia Disability History and Awareness Month, October.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Here we go, I'm going to read the proclamation, and then we'll take the vote. Okay, this is the proclamation for Virginia Disability History and Awareness Month, October 2010. Whereas all children are worthy of our best efforts to support and educate them, and whereas teachers work every day to inspire and challenge each student, and whereas increasing public knowledge, awareness, and understanding of disabilities will help to ensure full participation of students with disabilities into the life of our schools, and whereas our community supports our schools and all children to achieve at the highest levels, and whereas the Pecosin City School Board recognizes that our children's future depend on the development of leadership skills among all students, now therefore be it proclaimed on this 21st day of September in the year 2010 by the School Board of the City of Pecosin, Virginia, that the month of October be hereby celebrated as Virginia Disability History and Awareness Month in all Pecosin City Public Schools. Any discussion or comments before we take the vote? All right, would you please poll the board?
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Bellamy?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Chairman Diggs?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Item 8, public comment. Do we have any public comment this evening?
No, we do not.
Okay. And we'll move into communications. Dr. Parrish, would you like to start us?
Yes, first, I'd like to highlight an event we're having this week, especially for those in the community who may be watching tonight. We are doing our annual child fund, and it is going to be this Thursday from 10 to 7 and at the Trinity Church. It's for children who are under 5, and what they'll receive are screenings and things such as hearing, vision, speech, language, and educational development. And we're also adding a new feature this year. We're going to have a dentist who will actually do some dental screenings for the children that arrive, and that the dental screenings will be between 11 and 2, and then 5 and 7. So if that's something community members are interested in, those are the times they'd want to be there. Our school division staff works hard to plan this event, and a big thank you to Doris Feldman because she spearheads the planning and organization of this event for us, but it is a wonderful event to see, and it does really provide some great resources for some of the youngsters in our community. Also, I'd just like to let everyone know, certainly ties into earlier budget discussion, but we have been watching enrollment very closely, and our total enrollment as of right now, we have 2,327 students in K through 12. So we're a little bit over our budgeted amount, but we won't know exactly where we stand in terms of our average daily membership, which is what our budget is based on until the end of March. I will say, while we're a little bit over what we budgeted for, we have seen a decline in enrollment since last June of 47 students. So the decreasing enrollment that we've talked about is continuing to occur. We saw decreases at the elementary school and the high school, and then slight increases at the primary school and at the middle school, but not enough to offset the decreases we saw across the other grade levels. So we're continuing to watch it, and again, our average daily membership, which is determined in March, really does determine our budgeted amount for the year, but I wanted to give you that update today. And I really want to take the opportunity to thank everyone for our smooth opening to school. I've been in the schools, and teachers are in there teaching, and students are in there learning, and it's just great to see all that occur already in our schools. And I want to do a special thank you to the primary school staff and parents. We did open a new kindergarten class. We started that class on the second Friday of school, and it's going very, very well. And so a big thanks to the staff that helped to make that transition so smooth, and the parents who were so supportive as we made that change so that we can ensure that all of our kindergarten students had the best opportunities they could. And that's just one of those cases where we sometimes have to get the students in, and we find that we had more than we predicted we would, and we make the changes that are best for our students. And I really just can't thank everybody. We certainly have opened the school with some changes because of the budget cutting we've done, especially last year on top of what we did the first year. And just a big thank you to everybody for, I think, in many ways, not even making some of those changes as apparent as they would be if it weren't for the hard work that our teachers and staff throughout the school division are doing. So thank you very much. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Millie?
Okay, so this week at the primary school, since school has started, the rooms were decorated, and they were ready for the students on the first day of school. And there was a breakfast held for the bus drivers to explain to the students the peaceful bus program, and a bucket fillers assembly was held for all the kindergarten students and new students. And school pictures took place this week, and there is an assembly this Friday, September 24th, to kick off the no-bullying program. And the back-to-school nights at the primary school are Monday, September 27th, and Tuesday, September 28th, starting at 7:00 p.m. And at the elementary school, the Olveas bullying program started this past Monday, September 20th, at the school with an assembly, and it was a great way to get the students excited about the anti-bullying program. And the reaching new heights program is going really well, and any student noticed for making a good decision receives a courage card. And back-to-school night at the elementary school is Thursday, September 30th, from 6 to 8 p.m. The middle school has started great, and the students have been behaving really well. They will be, yeah, they'll be rewarded during their take-a-stand, lend-a-hand for their good behavior, and that is the middle school's bully prevention program. Back-to-school night is tomorrow, Wednesday, September 22nd, from 7 to 8:30 p.m., starting in the gym. And the 8th grade members of FCCLA and TechEd will attend the state fair this Friday. And the high school will celebrate the 100 years of Pecosin City Public Schools with multiple activities throughout the year. And the Olveas anti-bullying program started this week at Pecosin High School. It started with the guest speaker, Steve Fitzhugh, during an assembly today. He had great insight and encouragement for us students. And there is a dance and activity night this Saturday from 8 to 11 to help with the anti-bullying. And Mrs. Morrison helped with the senior class to raise almost $300 at a fundraising car wash to, for the honor flight program that aids World War II veterans travel to Washington, D.C. to visit the World War II memorial. And that's my report.
Thank you.
Okay, I made it to Pecosin High School last night, and Mr. Wright and his staff did a wonderful job. I thought it was very well organized, and the hallways were manned. For those of us that didn't know our way around, that was really great. The teachers were quite enthusiastic, and I thought it seemed like we had a pretty good turnout. I was curious about the speaker today and what team he played for. I don't know if I heard that.
The Denver Broncos.
Okay, Denver Broncos, okay. And also, Pecosin High School's band is traveling to Chesapeake on Saturday for their first competition, and lots of the board has children in the band, and so we want to wish them well.
Thank you. Congratulations to everybody on kicking off the 2010-2011 school year. I know it's always a chore to get the schools up and running and get back in the swing of teaching and eating in the lunchroom and doing all the other duties that come along with teaching. And so I appreciate all the teachers and Dr. Parrish and your staff, and all the principals and your staff as well. Outstanding job. "In the Pocket" was one of the best renditions of the Star Spangled Banner I've ever heard. I don't know about anybody else, but when it's sung like that, you can't help but well up with pride for your country and for our freedom, and I just appreciate, appreciate you sharing that with us, and thanks to all our men and women in the services who fight to keep us free. Ms. Feldman and Ms. Fratsky, I look forward to working with you on CAC, and first meeting, I'll be there, and look forward to that. Also, the SAT scores were awesome. We were above the state average, above the national average, and certainly, that's attributed in large part to the teachers and the system, but I don't want to forget the parents either. You guys keep up the fight, all right? The skirmishes every night over homework and the tenacity over checking grades, it's paying off. Thank you very much for valuing education because that's where it starts and it carries through all the way up to the SATs and into college, so parents, keep up the good work.
I'd like to add my thanks for the open house last night at the high school. Well-run, and I am looking forward to coming up to the primary school and elementary school next week. I'd like to send a shout-out to Russell Forrest, who is the fellow who pulls the band equipment all around for the band, very willingly. His child is, I think, long gone, but Russell's out there every Friday night and almost every competition pulling with his own equipment. And he also pulls for the chorus, but he really renders our services very kindly. He donates his time and his truck. So I just send that special thanks out to Russell for his dedication.
I'd like to thank the jazz choir. That was excellent singing. And I thank Mr. B. for doing such a good job with all the choir classes. And I would also like to, I tried out the parent portal this weekend, and it was excellent. I got right in and got both my children and can see their grades and their, everything about them, so I'd like to say kudos to everybody for getting that up and running. I think it'll be an excellent tool, and I think it will be well-received by all the parents.
So well wishes to the new teachers. I attended the new teacher orientation with Mr. Diggs and Mr. Smith. Lot of very talented new folks there. I think they're going to do really great things for us and the students and the community in general, so well wishes to those folks, and I hope they're having a great start to their new year. We've had some sporting events already, been out to a football game, field hockey. We went and watched girls' field hockey the other day against Grafton, so all of that is well in swing. Take advantage of those opportunities to get out and see those students participate. That's all I have. Thank you.
I think the student presentation to cover that again was excellent. I haven't heard a group like that in a lot of years. I would like to see that recorded, and instead of playing an old record or something at our sporting events, use that and publicize our kids that are singing it, and not just sporting events, but other things. I think there's places that we could utilize them and give them more exposure. That's a great group, really great sound and everything. I'd like to welcome back the students, the teachers, and the staff. I know you guys are anxious to get back, but it amazes me how excited everybody gets coming back to school. Even the kids are excited to come in back, and it's just good to see everyone excited, from the kids right up to the principals and everybody looking forward to it. That's encouraging. The 100th anniversary of Pecosin High School, the Pecosin Education Foundation is going to have a celebration on October 22nd down to middle school, where they're going to be selling barbecue platters, chicken platters, and you can also include it in that as your ticket into the game. So it's a great event put on by the foundation, and it's a good way to celebrate. So it's a great event put on by the foundation, and it's a good way to celebrate 100 years. And it'd be nice to have a huge crowd out there for that event. They do have flyers around. If you need them, holler, we can get those to you. I gave the board an annual report from the foundation, so everybody has that to get an idea of what's gone on the last year, and keeps you up to date a little bit with what they're doing. And that's all I have.
I'll finish out tonight. I would just like to thank all the people that, all the, of our staff and our volunteers and others that have been involved in getting our schools ready for the start of the year. There's a lot of work, as Mr. Pappas alluded to, a lot of work that gets done in the very short time that the students are out of the buildings. And the staff has just done an excellent job preparing our buildings and our facilities back for the students. Just accommodations to the bus drivers taking out, I believe it was, you said, 135 stops. Having such a change in the routes that they, I'm sure they've had for years and years, and how smoothly that's gone. Just want to say thank you very much for the dedication of starting the kids' days off correctly, getting them to school in a safe and efficient manner. Thank you very much. I would like to also just thank the board for your continued support of Pecosin. We often say things about the staff, and teachers, and administrators, but the group of the board, it's, I believe, the end of third year, I'm working with some of you, a little less for others, but it's always heartfelt seeing how, how much you all really care about the kids, and, and put in the time and effort to support Pecosin schools. So I just want to finish off by saying thank you very much for that. All right, that finishes up our communications. Do we have any material for board review this evening?
No.
Okay, thank you. We'll be adjourning this meeting and moving into a work session. We have quite a full slate this evening. We have seven items, followed by a closed meeting. We have a capital improvement plan discussion, tuition policy, state and federal revenue, the VSBA Code of Ethics, school board roles and responsibilities, tour of New Horizons regional schools, and the VSBA November conference. And then we'll move into a closed meeting. So with that, our regular meeting is adjourned.